Statement. Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on Thursday, February 6th, 2025. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2025 through January 2026. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 8th, 2024. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January 17th, 2025 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice at this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, PrincetonNJ.gov/calendar. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January 17th, 2023. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after an applicant's witnesses have testified. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned, Planning Board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. A countdown clock on your screen will help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Ms. Philip, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bardeckheimer.
Here.
Ms. Capizoli.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mayor Frida.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Ms. Nuka.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Ms. Perlmutter.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Ms. Wilson Anderson.
Here.
Mrs. Wilson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
And let me, let me just say for the record that David and Julie need to be sworn in, so they're not officially members yet. But we're going to, given that, I think the, them voting as I did is perfectly appropriate. Um, okay. And in fact, I'm going to swear in David and Julie at this point. Who wants to go first?
I'll go. I'm ready.
Okay, okay, Julie, if you can read what's before you and where it says swear in the first line, put it, say affirmed.
Okay.
And then at the end, it says Princeton Planning Board, that will be Class Two member, Romanum Ruto.
Class two?
Right.
Okay. Okay. I, since I, Julie Capizoli sincerely profess and affirm that I do and swear will bear true faith and allegiance to the government established in this state under the authority of the people. I do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the Office of Planning, Princeton Planning Board Class Two according to the best of my ability and understanding. So help me God.
Congratulations, and I really appreciate it. This was so significant for you that you had a bunch of balloons.
Yeah, love the balloons. That was a great touch.
Now, David, if you could read, and you're the Class Three member, as you know.
Yes. I, David Cohen sincerely profess and swear that I do and will bear true faith and allegiance to the government established in this state under the authority of the people. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the Office of Princeton Planning Board Class Three member according to the best of my ability and understanding.
So sworn in, congratulations and welcome back, and Julie, welcome back as well.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. It's great to see both your faces and everyone else's as well. Announcements, do we have any announcements? Justin Lesko or, or from board members or other staff? Nope, seeing none. Uh, we have no subcommittee reports because as, as of right this very minute, we have no subcommittees. But tomorrow, um, Owen and I have talked about this, and tomorrow I will forward to Justin and Carrie the subcommittees, uh, and they'll get them out to you guys quickly, I'm sure. Minutes, we have three sets of minutes. February 22nd, that was a special meeting. And then April 4th and June 20th, both regular meetings, so taking them in order. Um, the February 22nd special meeting from 2024, was there any questions or suggested edits? And if not, would someone like to move them?
I'll move them.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen, seconded by.
A second.
Okay. Thank you, Julie Capizoli. Um, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bardeckheimer.
Hi.
Ms. Capizoli.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. McGowan.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson Anderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
I know I've made this mistake before, but we, we can, we can pass the minutes with a voice vote, can we not? It's the resolutions we need to vote on.
True.
Correct. Okay, so the next ones, I'll just say all in favor instead of asking all vote. Good, so April 4th, um, 2024, any suggested edits or questions about these minutes? And if not, who would like to move them?
I'll move them.
Thanks, Mr. McGowan, seconded by Owen O'Donnell. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining?
Abstaining.
Say if you're abstaining, because if you weren't here, you're automatically. And finally, the June 20th, 2024, uh, regular meeting minutes, questions or suggested edits, and if not, uh, who would like to move?
I'll move approval.
Thank you, Zoli, seconded by Ms. Wilson Anderson, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, abstaining.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, okay, uh, next up, we have an application. Um, this is at 21 Wiggins LLC. It's a minor site plan, a modification, in fact, to an approved site plan, um, located at 21 Wiggins Street, Block 27.02, lots 42, 43, 44, file number P 2424-523 PM.
Madam, madam, madam chair, proof of application in service are in order. The notice is proper and the board has jurisdiction.
Great, thank you. Um, Justin Lesko?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'll be sworn in, but Henderson is going to get in tonight.
Okay.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me, I should have checked on that ahead of time. So we'll swear you both in.
All, all aboard professionals. Are there any other professionals here who can be?
Mr. Bridger and Mr. Weissman are both here, yep, so.
Go raise your right hand. You swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes, I do.
Just one or affirm, please just go around and say your full names.
Uh, Justin Lesko.
Ian Henderson.
Dan Weissman.
Derek, you're muted. But I saw him say his name.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, um, Ian Henderson?
Great, I'll just share my screen. All right, so as mentioned, we're in, um, Block 27.02, uh, Lot 42, so you can see that around the light blue outline. Uh, this is.
I don't see your screen, Ian.
No.
Yeah.
Oh, let me see, let's try this.
There we go, we're getting there.
Yep, yes.
Got it.
Okay, excellent. All right, thank you.
And let's mark that as PB1, and Ian, if you could identify what that is.
Sure, so this is, um, uh, Block 27.02, Lot 42, uh, that you see in the light blue outline. This is currently the parcel explorer from the publicly accessible Rowan University website, um, the parcel explorer. And, um, and so it's subject property, so as we, we mentioned, we have applicant 21 Wiggins LLC. They're seeking to modify a previously approved preliminary and final major site plan, um, that contained a bulk variance. This is, uh, to a minor site plan application without a variance. Um, I just want to emphasize that the, the previously approved variance is still in place. Tonight, there is no change in total units or any other, um, parking modifications proposed and no additional variances requested tonight. Uh, for the site itself, uh, we, we're familiar, you can see it's close to the Princeton Public Library, lies at the corner of Wiggins and North Tulane. Uh, we have the Presbyterian Cemetery across the street. Um, in terms of, of transit and accessibility, we have pretty walkable, uh, close to downtown. Um, we have public transit through, uh, NJ Transit, we have the Weatherford Stop at, at Paul Robeson. Um, and we also have the Spring Street Garage located nearby. So since this is a modification, I really just wanted to run down the, um, the application history and give a little bit of the prior application details. So, uh, there was an initial application back in 2021. Uh, this was approved by the Planning Board on December 9th, um, and involved just this, uh, property that we've mentioned. Um, there was a lot consolidation of these three, so is the, uh, 40, 41, and 42, I believe. Oops, sorry. And so the home that, uh, that you see where it actually says High Tops, that is the previous home of the High Tops and the Bayard Rustin Social, uh, Justice Center. And in this application, the, um, the first floor office use would remain, the second floor would be converted to an apartment. And then, um, we're looking at a, a newly constructed apartment building next to it, uh, four stories with, uh, 18 total apartments, four affordable units. Um, and then so 19 total would be, uh, with the new unit above High Tops or the, uh, former High Tops. Um, so the, this is within the AHO1 overlay. Um, so this enabled the applicant to utilize some increased, uh, density incentives. Uh, and in return for that, there was the main, the maintenance of the, um, of the existing house frontage on, uh, Wiggins Street. And, um, and so there was a, uh, approved findings of fact for this on February 3rd of 2022. And so per the municipal land use law, when you have that approved, uh, final major site plan, uh, when you have that date, a, uh, site plan is given protection against zoning changes for two years from that adoption date. Um, and then the board would have discretion to extend that period of protection for, um, for one year up to three times. So it's that two-year initial protection and then three one-year increments, uh, from that date. Uh, there was an extension granted, uh, to February 3rd of 2025, so just this week. So we believe another extension will be necessary. Uh, previously, the applicant said that, uh, an extension was originally required or, uh, requested because of the COVID-19 and just economic downturn um, in, in, in the general climate. Since the approval and memorization, memorialization of the application, there has not been any zoning changes that would affect the outcome or anything, um, of concern. Uh, the site itself, uh, is in the suggested central residential historic district, but it's not in a locally designated historic district. So there's no, uh, additional historic preservation, uh, commission review required. The, if anybody is interested, the historic preservation officer did prepare, uh, report and recommendations on the, on the previous preliminary and final, uh, major site, uh, site plan from 2021. It's also in the RB zone, uh, just for history, that was created in 1974 from parcels that were previously zoned, R4 Residential and R01, uh, that's Resident Office. Uh, the Planning Board voted against zoning change, and the council rewrote that with unanimous vote. So just to emphasize one more time that tonight, we're, we're discussing the modifications, uh, the structure, the apartment structure that, uh, the applicant will show in detail, has already been approved. And again, the High Tops remaining and, and, I'm sorry, I keep calling it that, but the office end of it, uh, will remain, that all, uh, holds, so we're just going to talk about the, the modifications, so. Um, I'll, I'll have the applicant describing in detail, but we're really looking in terms of the, a decrease in size in a bike room, uh, an increase size in a mechanical room, a decrease in a trash room. There's a rotation of stairs, which affects the, um, the layout of the, uh, the floors and some of the, the size of the rooms as well. Uh, there are additional balconies that are going to be added. Um, but I'll, I'll leave the applicant to discuss in greater detail. Uh, there would be an entrance canopy as well. And, and in terms of, uh, smart growth, I mean, it's, it's, we support, generally, it's a, a great project in terms of smart growth principles, we're looking at compact development. Uh, it varies the choices of housing, the direct infill within an existing community. Just in relation to our, our master plan itself, um, we have our land goal used that is satisfied, that we're looking to increase residential, uh, near the downtown. Right now, we have, um, according to the municipality's 2020 Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, only 17.6% of the buildings in town were five units or more, so this, you know, this is great in terms of, uh, density. And, um, and I, I mean, it just, you know, the, the repeat of, of being close to downtown, you have it in the economic development goal to increase workers who can, um, commute close by and by foot or public transit. And the RB Residence Business Zone itself was actually specifically called out as one of the downtown locations uh, for the quote "development of new residential dwelling," uh, to be promoted. I believe that's about all I have to kick this off. If there's any, uh, further comments uh, regarding the application, we'll be sure to chime back in after the applicant presents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. I, there were a few questions, um, raised in the memos that I, I'm sure the, the applicant will address. Um, I did want to say, and please, you know, Ian or Justin or Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong. But, um, just for the board, if you're, in case you're wondering, this is an application that, um, would have gone to the, or could have gone to the site plan subcommittee, since it's a minor site plan with no variances. But, um, because we were a little slow getting off the mark with the committee appointments, um, uh, the applicant chose to come to the full board in the interest of time and expediency and et cetera, so I think I have that right. If I have it wrong, I want somebody to, um, to correct me, but in case any of, any of our board members are like, uh, are curious, I thought I would throw that in the mix.
Uh, yes, ma- madam chair, that's correct. Um, the municipal land use law and our ordinance allows for, uh, these minor site plan applications to be reviewed by the full board or a subcommittee thereof. Um, if there's no subcommittee to review it, then the full board reviews it, and, uh, as of now until, you know, I think the near future, uh, very near future, uh, there's no subcommittee, but, um, I don't anticipate we'll see too many more applications like this, uh, before the full board.
Yeah, we'll have that, have those committee lists, uh, to you, uh, very shortly. So, um, any, any other, uh, anything else that staff, Mr. Bridger, Mr. Weissman, anybody want to raise before we hear from, from the applicant? Uh, Dan Weissman?
Madam Chair, uh, good evening, everyone. Just a couple of quick points I wanted to make before, uh, we hand it over to the applicant. Um, so there's a zoning provision to utilize the provisions of the AHO1 zoning district, um, the biggest of which is the retention of street-fronting buildings. Um, the applicant for this application, uh, for the modification has determined that the roof needs replacement of the structure, um, and that roof will be replaced in kind. Uh, so staff has determined that that replacement, uh, as it is a currently deteriorated roof, uh, still meets the intent of that provision, um, and with that provision, it's, it's this specific site uh, has identified this, you know, this, this building, uh, is contributing to that, the AHO1 zoning district, street-fronting corridor. Um, so that complies, uh, regarding landscaping, the, uh, it's just mainly a clarification in the memo. There's, um, a note that the prior approval, uh, required removal of six trees. Um, there's also, uh, a note that the memo shows that two additional trees are proposed to be removed, which is not correct. There are two proposed trees that will no longer be installed. Uh, there is a transformer that is proposed, uh, to the rear left of the, or southwest of the, uh, building, um, where those trees are no longer able, able to be, uh, installed. They still meet the replacement requirements of the Princeton ordinance. Um, there's just two trees that, it was 11 trees that were going to be installed along that lot line. Um, now there's only nine. So just two clarifications on the report I, I wanted to make. Um, other than that, there was a sign that the applicant has on their plans, uh, fronting on Wiggins Street, uh, and staff was just, uh, would like the applicant to clarify if that is for the commercial use or will be for the residential use. And with that, that is all I'd like to bring up now, and see what the applicant has.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Degresia, welcome.
Hello, good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the Planning Board. Um, before I get started, could we bring over Aubrey Haynes? I believe he's in the, uh, attendees. We brought over the wrong Aubrey. I think it's his son.
Certainly, I didn't realize that. I only see, I only see Richard, Will, and Anthony as options, so.
Aubrey, you brought over Aubrey Haynes. There, we now have senior and junior, or junior and third, or wherever they fall in the, in the family hierarchy.
Okay, thank you.
Christopher, why don't we swear in now at the outset, all of the witnesses you expect or may, uh, may testify, okay? And who would that be?
Since we're talking about Aubrey, why don't we have him sworn in?
Okay.
Start with him. We have our architect, Samantha Bard, our project design manager, Anthony Civitella. Oh, I messed up his name. Civitella, sorry, and Ralph Petrella, our civil engineer.
Is Ralph Petrella here?
Yes, but his camera's not on yet. There we go.
Look, if you could raise your right hand, uh, it's you. You swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
So, this, sworn or from, if you go around, please say your full name and spell your last name.
Aubrey Haynes, H-A-I-N-E-S.
Thank you.
Samantha Bard, B-A-R-D.
Thank you.
Anthony Civitella, C-I-V-I-T-E-L-L-A.
Thank you.
Ralph Petrella, P-E-T-R-E-L-L-A.
Thank you. Okay, Christopher.
Thank you. Um, for the record, my name is Christopher Degresia for the law firm of Figury, Drinker, Biddle, and Reath, here on behalf of the applicant 21 Wiggins LLC. Um, I appreciate the introduction, um, from Mr. Henderson. Uh, just one clarification, um, just for the record, the lots are 42, 43, and 44, and they were consolidated, and the new lot number is Lot 78. Okay. Um, the application, as mentioned, is, you know, it's a little bit different than the Planning Board may typically see. It's something that you would pretty much see before the site plan subcommittee, as was mentioned. So we're really here talking about very, very minor tweaks, like changing windows and sliding glass doors to make them a little bit better. So we're, we're really talking about tonight, minor changes to the building that result in very significant improvements. Um, so you're going to see a much better, uh, quality building and interior space. Um, for example, we're shifting, um, one of the stairwells by 90 degrees, and that's going to open it up for a better flow to the residential unit. Um, we're increasing the height of the ceiling to height inside the building. So each of the floors will get, um, from two to four, will get four extra inches, which will be really nice for people living there. Um, and we're adding another foot to the first floor, still well below what's required, um, the max in the zone. Um, we're adding operating windows, so to let in, uh, fresh air, which is another great thing. And, um, as I mentioned, the sliding glass doors, um, they were proposed as hinge doors, we're going to make them sliding glass to the balconies so that, you know, there's more space and more room. Um, so basically, and, and this is it, this is the sum total with a couple of little, extra little tweaks here. Um, we're talking about improving aesthetics, improving the quality and the living experience. Um, with that being said, I could, oh, I, I do want to mention, because it was brought up, um, we have a copy of your reports, um, particularly the engineering and zoning report, which had conditions. We have no objection to any of the conditions, and the one question that was in that report uh, was clarity as to the sign. It's actually a commercial sign, so it is, um, for the office segment of the existing building that's being retained, that's going to be a commercial or office sign there. Um, so I think that's all the questions, that was all that was in the report. Again, we meet, we, uh, agree to all the conditions. I think what we can do is, uh, show you some of those, um, changes that I, you know, I spoke about. Um, we'll have, uh, I think we'll start off, let me have our, um, architects sworn, uh, I know Samantha, you were already sworn in. Let me have you qualified for the record. Um, can you give us, you're, okay, you're off mute now. Can you give us a little bit about your history and your licensing?
Sure, um, I, I'm a project architect at USA Architects and received my license at the end of December.
And you're licensed in New Jersey?
Correct, licensed in New Jersey.
Okay. And, um, Anthony, where are you? Let's see, oh, there you are.
Ms. Bard, can, can you tell us a little bit about your, um, educational background?
Sure, I got my Bachelor of Architecture from NJIT, the five-year degree, and I have been, uh, working, I have eight years of experience.
Thank you.
Anthony Civitella, can you tell us, um, a little bit about your experience, your educational experience? Um, you're here as the project designer manager?
Yes, I have my, uh, Bachelor of Science in Architecture from Temple University, as well as my Master's of Architecture from the University of Michigan, and I've been practicing at USA Architects, uh, for six years.
Thank you. Um, so I, we have a very short presentation, I think it's, uh, five sheets, um, we could pull that up. Anthony, would you, are you able to pull that up? If not, okay.
Yes, I have it up. Let me know.
If you could, yes, that'd be great. If you can go through and just describe to the board what they're seeing here, that'd be great.
Sure.
And, and this, you just, as to whether we need to mark them as exhibits, these are all, these are all in the plan set, Anthony?
Yes, yes, these were, yeah.
Okay, so if you could just indicate, you know, what sheet they are, each of them are in the plan set, and I don't think we need to separately mark them.
Sure.
We should identify the whole plan set, as we did not put them on the website.
Well, okay, yeah, let's, let's make that exhibit, then we'll make that Exhibit A1.
Thank you.
I, I was going to say that as well, Jerry, because, because of the reports, there were some questions asked, and in this one, we're going to get. So we did make some changes to show how we're going to address it, just to make it clear. So, um, these, these should be, uh, Exhibit A1, which will be five sheets, and we'll identify the sheets as we go through. And this is the first floor, Plan Sheet 1.
Okay, and Christopher, when you say you've made some changes, those were reflected on the plan sheets that you, that were actually submitted?
Yeah, it's more details. Yeah, it's more details and answering questions and anything else related to mostly to the bikes, really, honestly, so.
Okay.
We'll go through that. Okay, Anthony.
Great, thank you, Chris. So I'm just going to walk through the building and just, and highlight all the changes and updates that we've, that we've made. So to start, we just want to identify that we have our interior bike storage in the lower right corner. Right now, we're showing two nine-rack bike holders that can hold up to eighteen bicycles indoors. Additionally, we have two public bike racks that are adjacent to the, the main entrance. And these are side-by-side bike racks so that the bike racks are not protruding into the right of way or sidewalk. We have a detail of that on the sheet here, right to the right. So it's a, it's a minimalist bike rack, but it, it'll, it'll serve, it'll help serve the public use for, for any public bikes.
Just to clarify for the board, the, the review report, the engineering and zoning officer's report indicated that where we had the bikes located would interfere with the sidewalk, so we shifted it around. So that's why there's a little change to the, the, the way that the bike, the bike parking is outside. We also are eighteen, we have eighteen indoor, sixteen are required, so we're above the required amount.
Thank you, that was exactly my question.
Good, correct. Thank you, Chris. Additionally, like mentioned, stair one in the middle was rotated ninety degrees. This allowed us on the upper floors, as you'll see, to create more efficient units in the southwest corner, particularly the two, two affordable units that are on that floor. So as we move up the, to the upper floors, you can see how stair one, the rotation was able to allow us to create a two-bedroom affordable unit at this corner. It's a much more efficient layout. Additionally, we squared this corner of the building off to allow for this unit to stack. It might be the same design on each floor. Additionally, we added the same type of balcony to this unit. The same pre-manufactured metal balcony that's on the, that's at, all the other units are now at this unit as well. Further, we swapped out the hinge doors that were, that were at the balcony areas for sliding doors. So this actually allows for more usable space on the balcony, as well as all windows that are on the project are operable windows. So maximizing fresh air intake on each unit. Also, on the, just above the first floor, we added an entrance canopy. So now when tenants or public are entering the building, there is some, some shields for, for weather. And, and it provides a visual, a visual aid for where the entrance was, as well as making sure that the lettering on, of the address that's on the canopy would be numbered and not lettered. The, like, that's, that's, those were the, those were the changes. The, like I said, the floor plan stack, we have our, we have our corner affordable units on both second and third floor. All the layouts are, are the same as they stack up. This is just showing the fourth floor floor plan, which is similar to the second and third. And then the last two are just going to be the exterior renderings. This is from Tulane Street, so you can see the entrance canopy. In addition, you can see the bike racks, the public bike racks that'll be on the side adjacent to, to, to the main entrance building.
And, and for the record, this is sheet four out of the five.
Thank you, Chris.
Correct.
Were the sizes of the affordable units modified?
There, there were general tweaks, but nothing was made smaller that, you know, they were. So the question, the sizes changed a little bit, Jerry, because we were asked to make them have more bedrooms in them than originally proposed, like we shifted from a two-bedroom to a three-bedroom. And we also, I guess, I guess I'll ask the architect that if they can just go into the numbers. But I, they're pretty much the same because as they say, they stack above and below. So the units are, are pretty consistent throughout. It's not, when you look at these, they look, they look the same, you know, the, the balconies are the same. Every aspect is the same now. It's, it's very nice.
Correct, and, and we actually were able to, a, a big, a big part of this was rotating the stair. So we're able to pick up more square footage. Previously, this was a one-bedroom affordable. We were actually able to make it a two-bedroom by also sliding the demising walls over and making the, making the demising walls and the, and the separation between the units more unified and equal. So that helped us distribute the, the square footage to each unit more evenly. And like, and like we said, because everything now stacks up, there's consistency on each floor.
Good changes.
Well, it was required that, that there'd be a three-two bedroom and one-three bedroom, but that was a condition of the prior approval.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. That you asked, that's why I said you asked us to shift the bedroom count and increase it, so we, we did. And you may also remember the affordable unit was in the center and we shifted it to the corner, which is what the board asked us to do and we agreed to. So, so it's, 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 it's a much better flow and design right now, just from that little shift of the stairwell.
Christopher, as you know, and Justin could get into this if you would like. Back in December, there were new regulations adopted for the Uniform Housing Affordability Controls, UHAC, which is now just called HAC. But it included, for the first time, requirements of the, about the size of the affordable units. Do you comply with those?
We, we believe we do. There's one unit that we talked about. I think it's the one right there with there, there's a janitor closet. If we convert over the janitor's closet and tweak it a little bit, we'll meet all the requirements.
Okay.
And, and Jerry, if I could jump in, I, I would recommend to the board, or I would ask the board, if, if you choose to approve this modification, if there could be a condition to allow for some flexibility of the staff to work with the applicant to make sure that all those HAC requirements are being met. This is another case where we received these documents before that new, those new rules went into effect. I think it would be unfair to send the applicant back to the drawing board based on how kind of small some of these rebalancing, you know, of square footage might be. So I think that might be the way to provide some flexibility where the rooms might not be exactly what you're seeing tonight. But something might be, you know, might go from nine hundred and ninety-five square feet to a thousand and thirty-five. So just the, the, you know, small requirement or some other rebalancing that we can work with the applicant on.
Christopher, that, you're okay with that?
Yeah, we'll definitely work with staff on that. I, I, we think it's a, yeah, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Good.
And was there anything else, Anthony, that you wanted to, to talk about? I think we, we covered everything. Like I said, these are very small tweaks, but they make a significant contribution to the overall aesthetics and the, you know, the, the living space within the building. I do want to say, you know, Jerry, I'm, I'm not sure how this works in terms of extension, since this is a minor. But if, if we can add on, just so we have a period of protection, if we can add on a year, we would make that request this evening as well. So it would take us to next, uh, next year, this month, basically.
Yep. Yeah, I think we can. It's, it's a pleasure report, obviously, but I think the board has the authority to do that.
Yep. Thank you.
And would that be a part of the resolution or does that need to be a standalone document and vote?
I think it could be part of the resolution.
Okay.
And Christopher, while we're talking about conditions, maybe it's a little premature. Obviously, there's a set of conditions in the approval, which is being modified. But are there any that, that you're suggesting need to be modified?
No.
Okay, good, great.
Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I just, really minor, but in terms of the bicycle parking calculations, staff did a different bicycle, according to the report, staff did a different bicycle requirement calculation that is listed on the architect's plans. And I would suggest that there be a condition that the architect update the bicycle parking requirement calculation to, to match what staff did. That was not in the staff report, but I suggest that.
Certainly agreeable. Whenever, whenever I see a conflict, David, we always go with staff.
That's wise, prudent.
Did I quite catch what you said? Did you say it was not in the?
So the, the, the staff report noted that their calculation of the bike parking was different
I see.
than the applicant's, but they did not propose a condition that the applicant update the calculations on their drawings. And I wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
And then I have one other very minor thing. It's a suggestion, not a condition that I want to impose. But I was struck, this doesn't have anything to do with the changes. But I was struck when I looked at the north elevation of the addition, you know, which is what you see behind the existing twenty-one. You don't have this in your package tonight, but it was in the package that was on the website. That elevation is extremely blank. And I think you could add a few windows into some of the apartments that would both enliven the, the elevation and it would also make those apartments more desirable. And you've done that on the other end, on the south end of the building, the corner apartments have windows on both, you know, both sides. So I, I just think you could do the same thing at the opposite end and, and make those, that elevation a little nicer.
You have a slide showing that elevation?
It's, it's not in, it's not in here.
Yeah, okay. That acceptable?
We could take a look at it. I think there was a reason why our architect didn't have a window there. And maybe I could ask them to, to, to comment on it, but I mean, we could take a look at it. I, I think with the building there, well, I don't know, I, I, I can ask someone from our architect.
I'll speak now. Yes, we'll take a look at it, David.
Great.
I think it would be a benefit to you.
I agree.
Yeah, and is that the south elevation?
No. It's, it's the side that has the existing structure.
Correct. Oh, okay, okay, good, fine, thank you.
Just, just a note about that as well. So one of the reasons we don't have windows along this facade. So we obviously have our circulation cores in the middle that stack up. We wouldn't have any windows there. Additionally, in the, in this unit, the southwest unit, the only part of the unit that's exposed along here is the bedroom. We don't feel that it would be desirable to have a window kind of behind your bed in this area as well as having one here. But we can certainly look at this corner. We obviously, we have our, our kitchen along this wall. But there is an opportunity along this corner to add an additional window, for sure, at, at, at this unit on all fours.
I would just say, as somebody who spends a lot of time standing at the sink, it's really nice to have a window there. Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, may I ask just for clarification? And really think my clarification is for you, Justin. The HAC regulations, could we understand what again are they? How material are they? And as a practical matter, if for any reason along the way, these regulations are in some violation, what's the impact of a problem ongoing?
Sure, so HAC stands for Housing Affordability Controls. It used to be Uniform Housing Affordability Controls. And it's essentially what regulates the, any restricted or designated affordable unit in the state. So for something to, to fully count as a designated affordable unit, you comply with these rules. And the rules differ depending on a hundred percent affordable versus inclusionary, rental versus inclusionary to own ones in terms of both the physical makeup of the apartments, which is what we're talking about tonight, as well as what comes after of what levels of income they're set at and, and what the residents can be charged at and all that sort of stuff. So the reason it comes up tonight, well, let me step back. The, the HAC ones went into effect December nineteenth of last year until December of next year. At that point, I don't know what's going to happen. Are they going to be extended? Are they going to go back to the UHAC or is there going to be something new? I suppose these were intended to be temporary or, or just a year long for now. But what we're talking about tonight, there are a variety of rules of things that we've kind of discussed in the past that we never truly, you know, there was never truly a requirement for, such as minimum sizes of those apartments, the designated affordable ones, ranging to things like having to have a window in every bedroom. Or I'm not sure if you were on the board yet, Mr. Taylor, when this originally came up, but there was a big discussion about where the affordable units were going to be placed and what's more desirable, you know, location-wise. And these new HAC rules now have requirements of, of things like that. You can't cluster them in the least desirable place. You can't make them much smaller. You can't make them, you know, have different features to some extent within them. So really, it's a more comprehensive list of requirements for designated affordable units than it was in the past. But like I said, we're, we're studying them in real time as applicants are. I, I really would have hated it if we had a application on December nineteenth of last year with affordable units in it because I don't know what we would have done. But it does not, because it's not a zoning change or really a part of municipal land use law, the time of application rule does not seem to apply for these rules, meaning an application like this that we got before December nineteenth of last year still falls under these rules, you know, because that was the effective date. Unlike if there was a zoning change or anything like that where we would go when we got the application. So does that answer your question, Mr. Taylor?
Almost, I'm, I'm still confused. What, if any, is the significance of your description and where things stand on an approval? Is it a conditionality? What's the practical implication of your description of HAC?
For these units or any units to be considered as, you know, designated affordable or what they call restricted units, they need to comply with, with those regulations. So our ordinance says you need to have twenty percent in a building like this to use the AHO. It then, for those to count as twenty percent, they need to, you know, comply with the HAC rules. So it would be a condition of approval for the, the units to comply with those rules. Now, just what I, what we are asking at this time is for something where the changes might be so minor on an application like this, is to be able to work with the applicant after, rather than say, hey, come back in two months or, or you're now incomplete and, and you got to redesign or anything like that. Because I, I do think there is a, what you're seeing tonight, there's a, you will end up getting this with just very minor changes that might be, you know, somewhat imperceptible.
So we can deal with it as a practical matter in short.
Exactly.
In, in this case, Jack, because, and we're fortunate that they're back. If they weren't back, there's a question that, that Justin and I struggle with. A developer comes in, gets an approval, has not gotten the building permit. Now these HAC regulations have come out. They're not in compliance with that. What do they have to do? They have to come back and modify the plan. But here, they're already before us, so it's, you know, it's much easier to deal with.
Good. Well taken.
I just want to quickly clarify, I I think that Justin, when you were saying, when you talked about, you know, not locating units in the least desirable place, you're talking about within a building or within a project as opposed to part of town.
Yeah.
Is that correct? Yeah.
Yeah, this is project specific.
Yes, yes. Nat Bodikheimer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a question for staff as well, just following up on Jack Taylor's question. So I I I take from what you're saying that well, okay. The question is, if we are okay with the working out subsequently, are we at any risk of making, of approving something that's that would be in conflict with the state affordable housing guidelines and that while we had approved it, someone outside of you know, at the state level or some other level would take issue with it?
I don't I don't think so, Nat, because the the condition is going to provide, it's going to have to be reviewed by staff and staff is going to have to make the judgment that it complies. It's not that they can look at it and then they did a job, good job, they came fairly close, acted in good faith. They have to comply. And that's what the condition will say, and they'll work with staff to do that.
All right. So the conditions are simply that it will comply, even if we don't know exactly what the conditions are right now?
Right. And and we leave it to staff to work out, you know, the details exactly how.
Thank you.
And they've testified that they believe they comply if there if there may be a a very small change that's made to the janitor's closet or something to add a few square feet or something. We're really not talking about substantive changes to the plan at all. It just wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't do that and that that's not called for here.
Right. Because if that was the case, I mean, we'd be recommending is come back with a modified plan.
Yep, right. Any other questions for for the witnesses or Mr. DeGresia or Mr. Haynes? We, I don't think we ever saw slide five. I could be wrong about that. But it's just the other, the other side. Yep. Power station, I guess, or the parking lot, to be fair.
Yeah, that's that's
Nice. Okay, so again, other other questions? Or do you have any other witnesses, Christopher?
No, we don't have any witnesses. Jerry, with regard to the UHAC amendment, it's our understanding that we comply. I know everybody's talking about it and that we meet those standards. In the condition, if it is determined that for whatever reason there is some like discrepancy, I would also like the opportunity to see if it would actually be applicable. Because, you know, I know these were all kind of done with the fourth round in mind. And I think that given the approvals, even though we may not have it constructed yet and this not changing any of the real building at all, or bulk require, you know, basically nothing other than, you know, increasing the, you know, bettering the the environment. I I think there's an argument in case we're up against a wall there. So I just want to have that flexibility. We we believe we comply and based on staff's review, they think we will be able to comply with that 40 square feet. But in case there is something out there that we're not aware of, that we would like the ability to work with staff or to determine, you know, through, you know, Co or whoever we need to 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 make sure that it's not applicable in our case.
So I'm not exactly sure how that works, Christopher. So you work something out with staff, not quite there. What rights?
We have the ability to take a look at it and see if we could find evidence that it would not apply or were exempt for some reason.
Okay. You're not talking about filing a lawsuit or anything like that?
No, no, no.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I mean, that's that's
Yeah. In other words, if we hit a wall, I don't want to be bound by something that that they that was designed for the fourth round and shouldn't really be applied here. You know what I'm saying? That's all.
Okay. I mean, I do think it's a little bit problematic of who you would get to testify to the fact that the new rules don't apply to you, Chris. I mean, would you go? Would you go to DCA? Would you go to Fair Share Housing? I mean, because I don't know that there's any, I don't know that there is somebody who has ultimate authority to make that determination.
Yeah, I I don't know, David. I just wanted to, because like I said, this is kind of an odd thing coming out. And I don't want to get stuck on something that may not be because of its, you know, because of when it was, when this was, you know, essentially approved and when that came into being, that it just gets us stuck and that the project can't move forward. That's all. I just want the flexibility to make that argument. And, you know, the staff could take a look at it. If we can get clarification from Castle Affordable Housing or, you know, the the agency that's that's it's it's just the the ability to make sure that you know, we have the ability to determine if it doesn't apply, that we should be able to use that, you know?
I guess.
It's not clear in the provision itself. It's kind of ambiguous. The timing. Honestly.
Yeah, I I thought you were indicating that if you could find something kind of in the legislative history which says this is what it means. But I think, I think David has a good point that I I don't think I'd be uncomfortable going out and you soliciting an opinion from, well, you said.
I'm hoping, yeah, I'm hoping we never get there, but it would be like a legislative history, a review, and see if we can get some clarity. You know? Honestly, that's what we would be doing.
We leave it ultimately to the judgment of staff, and I guess it would be made as to whether that that that's valid and affects the 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 provision is 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 applied. I I think that's reasonable, but I think that's it's quite limited. David, are you comfortable with that or are you not comfortable?
Yeah, I I I just I mean, I think you're right, Jerry, that I think you would have to be the arbiter of whatever evidence they come up with. And, you know, I would encourage you to be cautious when you're when you're being the arbiter, because you know, there's these things do always seem to end up in court somehow. You know, so even if we got a letter from DCA saying that they think the new rules don't apply to this project, Fair Share could come in and object. Last thing we want is to have affordable housing units that we cannot take credit for. So, yeah, I I have no problem with Chris doing the legwork to try and document. But I think I think it's going to be a heavy lift.
Yeah, and document within the context of the existing record, if you want to use it that way. The legislative and administrative record which created these rules.
And after a thorough review by staff. I mean, we're not talking about, you know, pick a door. I think the the staff review is you know, is mandated in the condition. And if there are remaining questions or whatever, something that can't be resolved by working with staff, that's when you might exercise another option that Mr. Muller gets involved with.
Yeah, and I think that's an important point to make, Louise. That's that's right. That would only come into play at that point.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
This kind of follows through on that, but I kind of wondered, you know, at what point the changes can't be resolved and they have to come back here? I think staff has a lot of leeway, but this is such a new area. Nobody really knows where the, what, where the lines are. So that if we're, if we're talking about doing, you know, inquiring to the state and relying on some un codified rule of some sort, when do they come? Do they ever come back here?
That's a good question. I guess I had not seen it that way, but I had seen the review is really limited. And they, they they can't solicit an opinion by somebody else. It's if whatever the legislative record is, if they see something that says, you know, you're really misreading this provision. And as Louise said, that's at the end of the process. Going to try to work out with staff all of this, and I think it will be worked out. My guess is it will be worked out. But if if there's something, they're not quite there and they find something that says, you know, I think you're misapplying this provision because of X. And X is something in the legislative administrative record. That that's what we're talking about. I don't think, that's what at least I'm talking about. I I I don't think you need to come back to the board, but if it's a board pleasure, can go back to the board. But in those circumstances, I could say, yes, you're you're right. It really doesn't apply here. Or we're we're misreading it, misapplying it. And that would be the end of the story. As I say, I don't see making a mountain out of this.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting they necessarily come back. But at the same time, I want to, you know, I think the board needs to be protected so that if this really, because because everything is so new here. If this turns out to be a mountain and not just a molehill, they should come back.
Yeah. And and we do have to keep in mind, of course, that if something like this, you can see the other other developers in town having their ears wide open. And if we do something like this here, I I just don't want to set a precedent where everybody's going to come running in.
And I I think it's important to note that if they do need to come back, if it's still a minor site plan with no variances, it could well go to the site plan subcommittee and not to the full board. Is that?
That may be. I mean, that may be, but it still gets
I know, I just wanted to David?
Yeah, I I I want to say, I honestly think the only circumstance in which it comes back is if they have to make significant changes to the plan in order to comply with the new hack rules. That's that's when it would come back. And if it came back in that circumstance, it would not be as a minor, probably. Because it would be significant changes. So I think that either the changes are going to be very minor and they will comply. Or they won't comply, but they will get good convincing evidence that they don't need to comply. Those two scenarios, they don't come back. And then the third scenario is the rules do comply, they they do apply. They can't meet them by minor changes and they have to do a more significant redesign. That's the circumstance in which they come back.
Yep, that's correct. Yeah. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Anything further from you, Mr. DeGresia?
Nope, that's all. That's all from our end.
So Jerry, would you like to? Do we want to motion first and then go over? No, I guess.
Do we open it up to the public or not?
Of course, I'm sorry. Oh, so sorry. I'm rusty. We had to cancel our last meeting. Okay, so we have 26, or excuse me, no, three people in the attendees room. If any of you wish to, and I see your hand went up, Mr. Cohen.
No, no, it was a mistake.
Okay. If any members of the public wish to address the board, now is the time to virtually raise your hand and Ms. Philip will bring you over. I am not seeing any hands go up. Going once, going twice. Okay, with that, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Thanks again, Carrie, for keeping me honest. And so now let's let Jerry quickly review the conditions we've discussed and we'll entertain a motion.
Okay. We start with what I'm just talking about, that the applicant's going to work with the staff to ensure that all of the hack requirements are met. They they would have the opportunity if after reasonable efforts by by both parties in good faith, that they can't be met, they can, if they can find something in the record indicating that the that a provision which is basically become problematical is being misinterpreted by us, we would have the the right to determine whether that's the case or not. And that would be me who has that right, but that's very, very limited. And then one-year extension to February 2026, all of the 2021, that's the prior resolution conditions are in. Architectural, architect updates the bike parking as per the memo of Dan and Derek. More windows on the north elevation. The applicant will work with staff. And they will do one for the unit where there's a kitchen on the north elevation. But they do not.
Oh, I I I'm sorry, Jerry. I did I did not mean to command that. I just was pointing out for the window that the the kitchen, you know, if you're, the face basically faces north. Many people consider it an amenity to have a window to look out of. I I just was making that point. I did not mean to to force that particular
Louise, I think it's appropriate to make the condition. They've agreed to it.
All right, we we agreed to take a look at it. I wanted to make sure we could do it. It meets code and you know, it works out. We can work with staff. We agreed to take a look into it. I I can't confirm at this moment that we'll actually have windows, except for that one unit, he said, the one with the kitchen.
Right, that's it. That's what I'm referring to.
Yeah, but there was availability in that room later, you know?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I I I just want to remind people, my original comment was that it was a suggestion, not a proposed condition. So
We're okay looking.
That was my intent.
We will look very carefully at it, but we cannot commit.
Now, I'm hearing two different things from from the applicant. On the one hand, I thought it was definitive by Mrs. Cifatella that they could do that window in the unit where the kitchen faces is on the back wall. But Mr. Haynes is backing off that, correct?
Correct.
You know, I mean, I I I don't give much credence to, we'll think about it. We'll think about it. That doesn't do anything for me, because it's it's meaningless.
The reason why the design is the way it is, as it is, is because of careful. I think we've probably revised this design no fewer than 10 times. So what you see is something that's the result of three different architects and many hours of hard work to get it to where it is. So there's a reason why it is the way it is. I'm not exactly sure how we ended up with no windows on the north face. But again, we will take a look at it. We have heard your concern. I can't guarantee you that we'll make, we'll put a particular window in a particular location if I haven't had the chance to take a very careful look again at the plan and make a considered decision.
And and part of the reason, Jerry, that I'm not comfortable making this condition personally is that it doesn't have anything to do with the changes that are before us tonight. You know, it doesn't have anything to do with this minor site plan. It's just a a comment that probably should have been raised four years ago. But you know, so I I'm appreciative of the applicant for looking at it, but I I think it's it's not super appropriate as a condition.
Okay.
I agree with that. And I think the point that you made, David, is well taken, that it it would probably enhance those rooms and those apartments. And so, you know, maybe that's something for the applicant to factor in as well.
Okay. Then just other conditions, at least going through the the memos. Now, Dan and Derek, we talked about the bike rack and the one by the the outdoor rack will have to be moved. Let me see where that is. Has the outdoor rack already been shifted in the plans?
Not in not in the ones we submitted, but in the exhibit we showed.
Okay. 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 Talked about the architectural drawings and the bike rack calculation.
Yep, we'll update that.
Sign permit from the zoning department. This is now with Dan and Derek, page four. Okay. Then be labeled 60 North to Lane. Is that already been shown on the, it's 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 not in the plans, but it's on the exhibit, right?
Correct, Exhibit Four.
Yep, okay. Then
Sorry, Mr. Mr. Mother, sorry, just going back to page three. We are also just requesting as a condition of this one, that the revised landscape plans be reviewed by the municipal landscape architect. The prior landscape plans were already deemed compliant. So we're just requesting that the condition be added for this one, this this application as well.
Sure, thank you, thank you, Dan. And then all conditions of the prior approval, I think I said that already. And the last condition that Dan and Derek had is compliance with the with the UHAC, now HAC. Okay, and that's, that's it.
Okay. With those conditions enumerated.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That the roof, Dan mentioned earlier, the roof needs replacement, be replaced in kind. Did you say to be replaced in kind? And that's it.
And Jerry, we're also requesting the one year extension of the preliminary final site plan approval.
Yeah, he mentioned that up up top.
I didn't catch that, thanks.
Okay. And that's it.
So with those conditions, would someone like to make a motion?
May I make a motion as proposed?
You may.
Jack will not be amongst the people voting, though, because we have a full quorum tonight.
Then may I make a motion in spirit?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Absolutely, Mr. O'Donnell has his hand up. Is that a motion, Owen? You're on mute.
I'm sorry, yes, I would like to make the motion including the conditions that Jerry outlined.
Second that.
Okay, great. Motion to approve this minor site plan modification to the approved site plan and seconded by Nat Bodikheimer. Ms. Philip, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Bodikheimer?
Yes.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Frida?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Any any sense of when you'll be underway with this project? Or I guess it depends on tack and other things, but just out of curiosity.
The plan is late spring.
Oh, fantastic, okay. Well, thank you again. Really appreciate it and with that, Mr. Cohen being back in the fold.
How did you end the last meeting?
I I don't even remember. No, Mr. Mr. O'Donnell made the motion, I believe.
Thanks for covering for me, Ellen. I move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, everybody.
Favor.
Thank you very much.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you.
See you next time. I will not be at the next meeting of the planning board, but I will see you at the meeting.